And officially call the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission, July 17th, to order. Members of the public wishing to address the Planning Commission on items appearing on the agenda are requested to complete a speaker's card, they're in the lobby, outside the two double doors, and file it with the secretary. Cards are available, as I said, in the lobby. Speakers should state their name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes or less. Comments must be directed to the commission and not to the audience. And while the Planning Commission is in session, all in attendance are expected to maintain order and decorum and to obey the orders of the chair. Can we have a roll call, please?
Vice Chair Nolan.
Here.
Ms. News-Powers.
Yes.
Corbin.
Here.
Lottis.
Here.
And Chair Quilisi, absent.
Good. Commissioner Corbin, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now we've got Public Communications, and this is the time, set aside during the Planning Commission, for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of city business other than the scheduled agenda items. Matters raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the commission will generally be referred to staff and are placed on a subsequent agenda. Under state law, other than for emergency items, no actions can be taken at this meeting. I have no speaker cards, is there anyone that wanted to speak during public comment? Communications, no? Okay. We're going to move on to the consent item. And tonight, it looks like we have one item, and that's our minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission from June 19th, 2019. And would anyone like to make a motion?
I would just like, I'll make a motion to approve with just one correction. Let's see. I just wanted more clarification on discussion item number four. So I asked about if they plan to restore the native vegetation, and Mr. Millet answered they plan on restoring a large area, but I think it would be better if they, the response was they planned on restoring some areas of the native vegetation, but at this stage, not sure how extensive.
Right, because large is, what does that mean?
It didn't seem, large didn't seem large to me, but it might to some people, so I just asked for that clarification, and I'll move for approval.
Good. Any other comments? Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Roll call, Sherri.
Powers.
Yes.
Corbin.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
Lottis.
Yes.
We do not have any site visits or experte contacts tonight, because we're just having the discussion items, so I think we'll go right over that. And then go to the public hearing. Our second item has been withdrawn. I'll just mention what it was. It was a variance 19-001 in Design Review Permit DRP 19-002 to construct a six-foot wall in the front yard located at 209 South Ventura Street. And I think that's all we have to do on that. All right, next, we go to our presentation, which is item number three, and that's the Sustainable Living Research Initiative, our SLRI presentation with Ben Warner. And I just wanted to do just a quick introduction. Several years ago, one of our past Planning Commissioners had asked staff and city council if we could form a sustainability committee. And myself and another commissioner, so there were three of us, were on that committee, and then one of them moved, one of them, well, they both resigned or retired from Planning Commission, and then Ray Powers also joined us. But previous to that, and kind of in conjunction with the time we were operating, I met Mr. Warner from Santa Barbara. And basically, the connection that we had was I had always wondered, how do we get something into the code or a zone change, something that's not there, especially if potentially has benefit to the community? And I had talked to staff and our city attorneys and council members, other Planning Commissioners, and I kind of was in the treadmill, not getting anywhere. And then fortunately, I met Mr. Warner, and he had done some work in Santa Barbara County with the Sustainable Living Research Initiative. We met, and then about two years ago, I believe it was, Ben came and did a presentation here at Planning Commission. We have, Commissioner Powers and myself have continued to be in contact with Ben, and we invited him back. The SLRI, the Sustainable Living Research Initiative, by the way, has been on our Planning Commission, in the packet, for maybe over a year, as one of those items that we wanted to address. So here we are tonight. And Commissioner Powers, did you want to add anything to that at this point?
I think all I want to add is that the concept and proposal of what Mr. Warner brings forward is especially apropos now, since the Thomas fires, and considerations and conversations that have occurred on land use and zoning and building and fire safety and earthquake resiliency. So it fits really hand in glove with that, on how to move forward in assuring the safety of our community.
Right. Well, I'll agree to that. And with that said, Ben, I'm going to turn it over to you for a presentation. We'll follow that with the discussion.
Great. Thank you for introduction, Commissioner Nolan. So the subject of my presentation tonight is a little different from the matters that your commission normally considers. What you are normally considering are specific plans for specific projects, and you're considering the object itself that may or may not get built. My professional background is as an electrical engineer, and so I can certainly relate to the focus on the object itself, the object that we want to build or design. And so it's a little bit strange, in a way, that I'm here tonight as an engineer, speaking to the Planning Commission, not so much about the objects, per se, that we're normally considering the design of, but really more so attempting to frame the relationships that we have with each other in how we design projects and how we permit projects. The reason that relationships are at the core, and structure of relationships are at the core of what I'm presenting tonight, is that I've come to the recognition, having spearheaded the SLRI for close to a decade now, that it is actually the process by which we design and permit projects itself, and the relationships that we have among ourselves and the structure of those relationships, that really is the root of the impediment that we currently have in implementing more sustainable land use projects. So framing it in that way, I'm hoping to invite you to take a big step back as I proceed with this presentation, particularly given that I, again, I am aware that you're used to looking at plans and the object itself, and the benefits or problems of a particular project. The subject tonight is really more the process itself, and how projects come to be within that process, which we often don't think too specifically about. So the outline of my presentation begins with the question of why does Ojai need the SLRI? And I'll attempt to answer that. I'll attempt to answer the question, why now? The specific timing and the context, and how the SLRI could potentially be implemented here. I wanted to tell you a little bit more about who I am, where the SLRI came from, so I'll share a little bit about the grassroots background of the SLRI, and the story that evolved from that grassroots origin story through some of the jurisdictions in the Santa Barbara area, just so that you have a sense of what has brought the proposal in its current form to you this evening. Because the SLRI is really about, well, one layer of the SLRI is flexibility in building, zoning, and environmental health codes in order to build more sustainable projects, there are necessarily certain code flexibility mechanisms as a part of the SLRI. So I will delineate those specifically. And then coming to what I just alluded to, the real heart of the matter, how would the SLRI permitting and decision-making structure, what is it, and how would it really enable the heart of the impasse that we're currently facing in accelerating innovation and sustainable land use? How would it enable the heart of that impasse to open and allow innovation to happen in a way that works for everybody? And of course, there'll be time for a discussion at the end. So in order to frame the possibility of doing things differently at a procedural level, in terms of how we make decisions, I think it's important to, in order to take a step back and look at that question, I think it's important to put this in a historical context. Because the way things are currently, in terms of how we make decisions around land use, really has a historical basis, and therefore could potentially be different in the future. And we often take for granted that the way things are currently is the way that they always have been and always will be, but that's not necessarily the case. So let's say 200 to 300 years ago, the origins of our current form of land use governance was really the frontier, in the sense that any individual owning their private landholding did, as they saw fit, irrespective of their distant neighbors, did what they saw fit on their land, what they saw best in the context of where they were and the problems that they were trying to solve. Now, this has certain benefits to it inherently. It engenders innovation. There's acute problems that each landowner was facing, and there was a particular unique context that drove them to solve those problems. So there's a lot of innovation when anyone can do, is free to do whatever they want. At the same time, there's a lot of diversity. If everyone is individually, has the individual authority to build how they see fit, then every structure's going to look a little bit different, the way people approach problems will be different. But of course, as we all know, there are problems with this approach, particularly when we start to densify and move from being very far spread apart into neighborhoods and cities. And as that begins to happen, the individual control begins to create situations which are both haphazard and hazardous. Everything from building methods and materials, which are flammable and not earthquake sound, which can lead to citywide disasters that propagate very quickly, and zoning issues such as placing industrial uses near residential uses or educational uses and so forth. So there's a limit to the effectiveness and the appropriateness of individual control, and although this is where we've started, where we find ourselves now is something which I'm terming centralized control. And this really means planned development. And planned development, both in the sense of zoning and in the sense of building codes and environmental health codes, solves, to a large extent, the haphazardous problem that comes from individual control. And it produces a built environment which is inherently, which tends to be much safer with respect to the hazards that we were concerned with when we started writing codes for fire safety and earthquake safety, and zoning codes for appropriate sighting of activities and so forth. However, there are negatives to centralized control and planned development. One is that the result tends to be homogeneous. Because the standards that are developed to address the need for safety are inherently universal, that tends to drive a homogeneous built environment. And at the same time, another negative is that because there is a single set of regulations that govern all projects irrespective of context, the result tends to be nonresilient. And this is the issue we're currently facing, particularly with respect to issues concerning climate change and other broader socio-economic issues that require action on the part of the entire population. And on that note, on the note of what we need to do collectively to solve these macroscopic problems, these global problems or these regional problems, these problems do require the engagement of all of the individuals in the community. And the current system of centralized control is not well-suited to motivate and empower that kind of action with respect to how we design and implement the built environment. And I think this is something that anyone who's been involved in land use permitting, either from within government or as a member of the public, I think this is something, this tension between our history of individual control and our present system of centralized control, I believe this is a tension we can all feel. It's not something that we necessarily consider solutions to, but this is a tension that unfortunately creates a relationship which is not friendly, between the individual who still inherently thinks that they know what they can do best on their land, and the governmental entity whose role is to ensure the well-being of the collective. So where we need to go, if we're going to resolve this tension, is something which I'm terming integrated control. And to give hopefully a clear metaphor, or an example of what I mean by integrated control, I'm going to use the analogy of living systems. By living system, I mean, for instance, a human body. In a human body, there are interests or impulses from the microscopic level, the cellular level, all the way to the macroscopic level of the organism. And what integrated control means is that there is a way, there's a system by which all of the potentially competing interests and impulses are able to coordinate and behave collectively in a way that meets both the needs of the individual, say the individual cells in the case of an organism, and the needs of the collective whole. And in our historical case, it's just the individual needs which are being met. And in the current case, there is an attempt to enable the functioning of the whole entirely from a centralized, from centralized control. So integrated control is always, it's okay, I'll give you a second.
It used to be a ring.
Yeah. Gives me a moment to take a breath, it's fine.
I apologize, I left somebody else's phone in my purse. It's my daughter's, and she's probably calling, but she's not happy. It's the same color, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Like I said, I appreciate the chance to take a breath. So integrated control is context-driven. It's not a single set of rules that applies to all contexts. And what integrated control would give us is the best of both. So if the individual control is the original thesis of land use, and centralized, or centralized control was the antithesis, and they're in opposition, integrated control is really the synthesis of these, meaning that it holds the potential to give us the best of both, which would be local innovation, context-specific change in how we build our environments, with regional coordination. So in other words, coordination with the larger collective needs at the same time. And I just want to pause for a moment and just recognize or acknowledge that this is a new idea. At this point, if this seems a little bit strange, or a little bit maybe uncomfortably strange, it's because this really is a new idea. And what I'm presenting, although they are ideas which are, I see emerging in certain spheres and private industry and so forth, in how organizations are run, it's, to my knowledge, quite unprecedented to propose to do something like this in a governmental setting around land use. So I just want to acknowledge, as I proceed, that I'm describing something which is quite Integrated control would support both diversity and adaptability. So with respect to the nonresiliency that we're currently facing, we look at a rapidly changing global environment, we recognize that change needs to happen rapidly, but we also see that change just isn't happening. We're kind of stagnated. And so if we're going to change collectively, we really need to operate like a larger collective organism that can respond the way that living systems do. And that requires the coordination, again, from the micro level of the individual through to the macro level at the regional and even global scales. And integrated control would continue to ensure the same level of safety that we currently enjoy through well-developed standards, but at the same time can be saved globally, in the sense that the built environment as a whole could more rapidly adapt and change to emerging contexts and larger collective needs. And I believe this is what we need. I believe the synthesis between where we've come from historically, and where we're, quite frankly, kind of stuck right now, I believe the synthesis is what we need. And I'm hoping by the end of this evening, you'll have at least a good sense of how this could operate, how it would look, and what the city of Ojai could do to implement it. Now, integrated control is essentially the SLRI, at its heart, at its essential concept. And in order to implement the SLRI will require two things, basically. One is flexibility in building, zoning, and environmental health codes, so that we can do more things that are innovative towards the goal of being more sustainable. But that by itself won't do the trick, because that would just be going back to individual control, potentially. What we also need is integration of all stakeholders into the permitting and decision-making process. Currently, the individual is now outside of that decision-making process. They feel that they have no agency. And on the other side, from within the government, the view looks like a public that, of individuals that's trying to serve their own private needs without considering the needs of the collective that the government agent is trying to look out for. So we need integrated control. We need a way for both the individual and the collective to engage cohesively in that decision-making process. So why now? Well, we have the city of Ojai, and I'm here because the city of Ojai has the issue, the conundrum that I've attempted to frame here, in that we're kind of stuck in how we can more effectively and rapidly do things differently towards goals that we all believe we need to achieve, but we don't really know how to do it collectively. This would require a funded program or a project implement, and the city of Ojai doesn't, to my knowledge, have the budget for that. However, there are grants which are available that fund projects in land use, or in resiliency with respect to land use in the built environment. One example is the California Resilience Challenge, which was, started to be developed at the state level a couple of years ago, and there may be a request for proposals coming out later this year. And there are other grants as well. So the third player is a consultant, potentially a small group led by myself, that would have the background and means to work with the city to implement the SLRI. So the consultant would develop a grant application, which the city would submit to a granting agency. If the city were awarded this grant, then of course, the consultant would work with the city to implement the SLRI. And if this were to happen, then as I envision it, the city of Ojai would be a model for other cities in demonstrating a more adaptive and resilient way of designing and permitting projects aimed at sustainability, and a model for counties as well. So I'm going to go take, shift gears a bit and tell you a little bit about, now that hopefully you get a sense of where I'm going with this, just a little bit more about myself, and how I got to the point where I'm calling myself an SLRI consultant. This is a picture of the fellow in the orange is myself. We are putting together a standalone bathhouse that I designed in the city of Santa Barbara. And we intentionally built this project without permits, because we wanted to implement aspects of the design that we knew were not even permissible. This is the finished bathhouse. And the particular, the specific element that we knew was definitely not permissible was a composting toilet system. This is the system and installation. For those in the parlance of onsite wastewater treatment systems, this is known as a Watson's wick or a Pumice wick, and it's a subsurface composting toilet system that works in the bioactive region of the soil. Within a year, what you see there uncovered was obviously covered, and is now a very productive little banana grove. So this is a very specific example, falling primarily within environmental health, of something that was not permissible, and by and large is still not permissible. We eventually, within a couple of years, became, the story of our project was leaked, and we became an enforcement case with the city of Santa Barbara. I had considered that if that happened, that I would hide my project, that I would disguise what was happening, and have a building official in for an inspection, pretend that there was nothing happening at all, as far as any inhabited dwellings. But at that point, we had already been giving lots of tours to the community. Dozens of individuals coming through, from schoolchildren to seniors, the whole range, and we were sharing what we were doing in terms of the toilet system, natural building materials, and the permaculture-themed agriculture that we were doing onsite. And so I believed that, when we became an enforcement case, that it would not be in integrity to actually hide what we were doing. I felt that what needed to happen was that the city create some kind of way to allow experimentation like what we were doing to happen above the radar, not just above the radar, but with a spotlight on it, for people to see and learn from. So I walked into the lines then of the building official. I decided to be completely transparent and told him everything that was going on, even the things that his staff did not know about, and suggested to him what I just described, that we should have some kind of legal means to do research on different ways of doing things. And the city official came through, brought his staff through a tour, and the planning director came through, brought her staff for a tour, and everything seemed to be going very well, until we hit a brick wall with the Creeks Department, who had just been sued by a local nonprofit for leaking sewer laterals. And the city recognized that although, the city officials recognized that although individually they appreciated what we were doing, saw the benefits of it, the city just had no mechanism to swallow the liability of something like what I was doing. And so I realized that if, and I was directed to remove the system, and, which I did, and then promptly put it back in place after it was inspected, and continued to use it, and we're, continued to be an open enforcement case with the city of Santa Barbara. As you can see, I'm here, so this has become a positive thing. It's the... It's, 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 it's the hardship with which, you know, we, we see opportunity to, to make change. But what I recognized, thinking as an engineer at the time, okay, so I just met a bunch of city officials that love what I've built, but tell me we don't have a law that allows us to do it. So I thought, well, why don't we just write the law? So that's what I, that's what I set out to do. Um, naively, of course, because I had no prior experience at that time in land use, um, law, or zoning codes, or building codes, or anything of that nature. I started to learn quickly, obviously. And right at that time, I heard that the city of Galita was developing their new zoning ordinance. NZO stands for new zoning ordinance. And I knew at that point, from my exposure to folks who were at least a generation older than myself, leaders in sustainability, that in order to do whole systems design and sustainability, we don't just need flexibility and on, you know, and on environmental codes. We need flexibility in building codes, we need flexibility in zoning codes. We need really to do, again, to do a whole systems design. We need all, all facets, um, open to flexibility. And so with Galita's new zoning ordinance coming down the pipeline, I thought this would be an opportunity to engage in the zoning-specific component of it. Even though the, my, even though my specific project did not reflect any zoning, any needed zoning variances, I saw it as a way to, to, to get, to get the ball rolling. And thinking in, in, in some larger code change initiative. And coined, coined the, the, the term Sustainable Living Research Initiative, initiative to encapsulate these, these, these three different areas of, of code. And so the city of Galita, after about a year of my lobbying and working with, with various collaborators and, uh, supporters, did incorporate the SLRI as an unfinished chapter into the new zoning ordinance, so that was a little success. However, not too surprisingly, there was limited planning staff time. And actually today, as of today, uh, Galita still has not, um, adopted their new zoning ordinance. They're years behind. So staff just did not have the, the bandwidth to really even think deeply about something as, as different as, as what the SLRI necessarily is. So that's where, that's where things are with the city of Galita. The county of Santa Barbara Planning Commission, uh, did direct a long-range planning staff to follow our progress with Santa Barbara City, which was based on Santa Barbara City's Planning Commission directing planning staff to research the SLRI for Santa Barbara City's new zoning, zoning ordinance, which was also starting in, in that timeframe. This was about five years ago. And so we had a series of meetings with Santa Barbara City planning staff. We had a small grant from the Bauer Foundation to, to support our work. We created, uh, some draft examples of the kinds of things that, um, could be enabled by, these are just thumbnails, I'll just describe them to you. This is a, an, an accessory dwelling unit, in a, in a single-family zone. This is a mixed-use, high-density apartment complex with near-zero parking and car share in a, a urban core. And this is a tiny house agricultural village, um, supporting agricultural functionality in an agricultural zone. So these are some examples that we, that we developed. And we also created some, uh, draft, uh, SLRI pro-, um, zoning program language as well. However, um, uh, we, we felt that this was, this was gonna, this was gonna happen in Santa Barbara City. However, at, at the last minute, planning staff requested that the SLRI pursuit be pursued as, as a separate effort. Kind of for similar reasons as with the city of Galita, there just wasn't enough staff time and bandwidth. The zoning ordinance was already behind schedule. And, um, the, the, the planning commission, um, acquiesced to the staff's request, and we didn't, we understood staff's position, so we didn't, we didn't, we didn't make a stink about it. But it took a couple of years of reflection after that for me to recognize that there was, there was a deeper reason why the, the proposition of the SLRI was too hard for staff to, uh, too challenging, too daunting for staff to really take on. And my recognition of that came through reflecting on a lot of the conversations that had, the, well, all of the conversations that I had with staff, where, in which we were describing the kind of flexibility that the SLRI would give applicants. And at every point in that, in that conversation, staff always had the concern that the applicants would take advantage of it. That the applicant would, um, would not build something that was in accordance with the intent of the SLRI, and that all kinds of uncontrollable negative impacts would ensue. Such as, for instance, it's, uh, uh, zero onsite parking would surely result in, projects being permitted that would result in, um, lots of, lots more cars in, being parked on the street and, and furthering traffic congestion issues. So this is when I realized that although the SLRI does indeed need code flexibility mechanisms, the deeper issue, and, um, maybe from some perspectives, the intractable issue, is a broken relationship between government and the public around land use. And this is, this is the, um, the thesis, anti-thesis that I diagrammed on the first, on the opening slide, where it's just, it, if we are going to try out new things, if we're going to do research and experimentation in land use in, in these three domains of building, zoning, and environmental health codes, we can't do experimentation within a relationship where there isn't trust, and where there isn't accountability that goes with that trust. And so if we're gonna proceed, if we're gonna, if, if we're going to create a way for, for the SLRI, or something like that to happen, my conclusion from having worked on this problem for several years now is that we first have to create a framework within which a trusting relationship and a relationship that engenders accountability exists between the applicants and the public, on the one hand, and on the, and government, on the other hand. Over the course of working on the SLRI, it was endorsed by a variety of regional organizations, including UCSB's Chancellor's Committee on Sustainability, the Green Building Alliance, the Community Environmental Council, the Gavirico's Conservancy, Los Padres Sierra Club, Santa Barbara Action Network, Cal Poly San Luis Obso Faculty, the UCSB Student Eco, Eco Coalition, or Eco-Revolution, and the Interfaith Initiative. So I'm gonna run this slide through the actual mechanisms, uh, potential mechanisms, mechanisms, if you will, uh, by which the SLRI would give flexibility in the three areas of building, environmental health, and zoning code. In building codes, the, the, the approach that th- there are a number of ways this could be done, that are in compliance with, with Title 24, uh, the state building code. And the, the method that I think is the most sound of these is to develop pre-approved plans under Title 24 Alternative Methods and Materials. And what this means is that, uh, current building methods and materials that are either not allowable or, or very difficult to get permitted for the average person with limited means, could be designed as pre-approved plans that are available to other people that want to do similar, to similar structures. Such as, for example, um, fireproof, um, monolithic adobe, or straw bale, or other regionally-specific materials that have benefits with respect of, um, fire safety and perform well in earthquakes and so forth. What I, what I envision with this approach is that it could in fact become, if Ojai were to adopt the SLRI and, and implement this, and other jurisdictions were to follow suit, that this could become an open-source inter-jurisdictional library. So although there's, there's an upfront burden, uh, of time and cost to create the first set of pre-approved plans for buildings that use alternative methods and materials, as the open-source library would, uh, grows, there, it becomes, um, an increasingly diverse set of options that are available at low cost to the average individual. Wouldn't otherwise have the means financially to have, have a alternative structure engineered. And moreover, I see this as a new architectural business model wherein that we could close the gap between the very high-end exclusive projects that enjoy architectural support and structural engineering support, and the commonplace projects which do not have the financial means to hire an architect. If you can imagine a, a set of plans available in this open-source library, an individual who wants to do, say, an accessory dwelling unit built in a, with a, a fireproof monolithic adobe, could find a model, maybe they wanna do a variation of it. They can hire the architect for a small fee to do a variation, add the model back into the library, and the library grows, and, and that individual has now a customized, unique, engineered structure. So that's, that's my pitch on how the, uh, building code flexibility layer to this could be accomplished. In environmental health codes, there's a, there's a similar, very similar concept. Pre-approved, pre-approved plans under the, uh, that acronym is the Regional Wa- Water Quality Control Board, which is the, uh, basically analogous to the, the Title 24 at the state level for, for, uh, for building codes. And specifically the LAMP, which is the Local Agency Management Plan, which is analogous to alternative methods and materials. It's basically the, 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 the loophole or the provision that allows the, the health official to, um, exercise his or her authority in permitting anything that they see fit. Provided they, they're comfortable with it, of course. However, in addition, there would be, since the, the risk of onsite wastewater treatment systems like composting toilets and gray water and so forth is not so much in the initial mechanical design, but in how it's used and what the impacts are to soil health and the water table and so forth. Depending on the context, a requirement could be attached to a specific project for some testing and reporting. So for instance, we could, a, uh, monitoring well, a, a small monitoring well could be sunk uh, near the, the installation, and soil and, and, and water quality could be monitored for a period. And after this, after this were done a few times, um, certainly the know-how in the community and within the library of pre-approved plans would grow, and the comfort with these systems would grow. In zoning codes, the, the, the key idea is a performance-based zoning program. So to my knowledge, the, the concept of performance-based zoning is not new. But, and, and, and to, to be clear about what that means, currently, almost all zoning is, is prescriptive. So it's, it, it describes specific uses prescriptively, and there isn't any, uh, way within prescriptive zoning to base the allowed project on how it actually performs in terms of community and environmental impacts. And it's, it's understandable that we're, we're, we primarily use prescriptive zoning codes because our current permitting system doesn't have any provision or mechanism for monitoring, uh, projects and for holding projects accountable to their impacts. And so in order to do, in order to implement the SLRI, we need performance-based zoning in order to allow for flexibility. And accordingly, a requirement for monitoring and reporting on critical impacts would be necessary. So for example, um, if a project was proposed for zero or near-zero onsite parking, the project, uh, application under the SLRI would include a description of, for instance, a car share program that would ensure, or that would enable the residents to meet their transportation needs without each owning, individually owning a car. And then there would be, as a part of the application, a plan for how the, the use of the project and the use of vehicles would be monitored and reported in a transparent fashion to, to the city and to the public. So each of these programs, uh, would need to be adopted by city ordinance or, or individually or, or collectively. So moving on to the permitting and decision-making structure, the, so one thing I wanna underline here is that everything that I'm describing and proposing for the SLRI does not circumvent current authority or undermine current authority. It, it, um, supplements it. And so the current authority within building and safety is the building official. And the reason, um, on a personal level and on a liability level, that building officials typically are not comfortable exercising their authority under alternative methods and materials is that, um, they, they are personally not experts in that subject matter. And so the first step would be to implement a way for the building official to be supported by expertise on alternative methods and materials from within the broader community, combined with the, the, the scheme for developing pre-approved plans and, and developing a library of those. Similarly, in environmental health, the health official is the, is the decision-maker. And if the health official is not comfortable with, um, different types of onsite wastewater treatment systems, they're not likely to feel, um, comfortable, uh, permitting them. However, uh, support in the form of expertise, together with requirements for monitoring and reporting, could enable the environmental health official to feel comfortable in exercising their, their authority under the local agency management plan. And similarly in zoning, the planning commission is the de facto authority, and expertise on infrastructure impacts and means of monitoring and reporting could supplement the, um, decision-making process for the planning commission and, and for staff. This body of expertise is something I'm giving the name the Sustainable Living Research Committee, or the SLRC, which would function, uh, or be, um, adopted just as any other committee is in a, in a, in a city or a county, uh, by ordinance. So coming back to the, the opening frame of my presentation, the government and the public as really sort of separate entities that don't really work together, and a hard line that divides them. The Sustainable Living Research Committee would serve as a bridge across this, across this boundary. And would be populated by experts, as I mentioned, and also by applicants. So this is a really, this is a really important idea, with respect to how this synthesis can happen between the government and the public. Currently, applicants have no agency in deciding if their project is permitted. They're, they, they make a presentation, and, and, and the authority is entirely from their perspective, and, and as a matter of fact, with government. And so it, it's, it's, as, as I'm sure you all know from, from your experience and your positions, that this is not a collaborative process. It is not a process in which, um, personal accountability is, is, is engendered. And yet, with a small group with which applicants and experts are co-identified, so I'm, 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 I'm beginning to frame the, 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 the the matter of relationality and relationships in this, um, as a necessary, as, uh, quite honestly, the necessary, um, factor in this working. So this is a circle that, with which each member identifies themselves, and within which projects are designed, permitted, and monitored, or held accountable as, as needed. So the expectation here is not that an applicant will come with fully detailed plans that they hope will get permitted. The idea here is that the applicant comes with a general idea of what they wanna do, some needs that they have that they wanna fill. And the generation of the plans and the design will actually happen within this, the circle, within the SLRIC. And so in reality, the ideas that the applicants might have had initially about what they wanted to do are going to change through the influence of the others, other experts on their circle. And this is really the, um, the benefit of good, well-facilitated collaborative decision-making processes. where all of the perspectives within that decision-making circle are heard, accounted for, and incorporated into the design. And so, the plans that would then be submitted, once the plans are developed and recommended essentially for a permit, once they're submitted to government through, to the existing channels that we already have, they will already very clearly describe how the project meets the intent of the SLRI in terms of advancing performance in terms of sustainability in the community, environmental sustainability and socioeconomic sustainability, how it conforms with all relevant codes, including the specific flexibility mechanisms that I outlined earlier, specific to the SLRI, and addresses both local and regional needs. So, the SLRC is populated by individuals, including experts, that represent, say, regional water issues and global air quality issues and socioeconomic issues, traffic issues and so forth. So, one benefit to government, staff and planning commission as currently constituted is that these issues which are typically come totally unresolved in their raw, naked, blistering form in front of you would actually be resolved before the plans ever come to you. They'd be resolved within the Sustainable Living Research Commission and would make your lives a lot easier. So, there isn't any good reason why fundamentally neighbors are fighting it out between themselves in this room. Fundamentally, neighbors should be working out the local issues and then coming here with plans that have resolved those local issues. And the SLRC provides a context to do that. So the applicants include representation of the project itself and must necessarily include representation from other stakeholders, including directly affected neighbors. Now, the next obvious question I would expect you might be asking is, how can this possibly scale? How can one little committee actually become, if it's successful, become more than just a pilot project for different ways of processing and designing projects? So as more projects join the SLRC, it gets to the point where it's just too crowded to engage in efficient decision-making. And at that point, a new circle is created and some members join the new circle. And you'll notice in how I've diagrammed it that there are a couple of members that are members of, a couple of individuals that are members of both circles. So this is analogous to when a cell in a living organism reaches a certain level of maturity, it divides. And when it divides, it retains both communication connection with the cells, the cell that it came from, and it also retains the inherited intelligence of the cell that it came from. And that's exactly how this would work. And there are, this type of governance by connected circles, that meaning small circles that have the ability to respond rapidly to specific contexts, is a type of decision-making which has, that's emerging in private industry in the form of decision-making structures going by various names. One of them is dynamic governance, there's another system which goes by the term of holocracy, meaning governance by holons. And the data from industry, from organizations that are running themselves this way is striking in their ability of the organization to respond rapidly to change and to fully engage all its members in the mission of the organization. However, this type of organizational structure, to my knowledge, has never been implemented in local government and certainly not related to land use. So I think that this would be an exciting thing to originate in Ojai. So I want to say a little bit more about what happens as these circles evolve. When they split, one of the things that's inherited is expertise and an understanding of who's who in terms of expertise. So having participated in the circle for some time, members of the circle gain an understanding for themselves, they, they're learning, so they're gaining expertise in certain subject areas, and they're also, they also know who really are the leaders within this growing network of circles in certain areas. So they know who to go to to get input if a project comes across their table that has unfamiliar subject matter to them. And just as importantly, or if not more importantly, the ability and the sense of what a facilitated process looks and feels like is also developed and inherited by members of these circles. So, again, the ability of a circle to facilitate its internal process to ensure that all perspectives are heard and that the design that comes out of it incorporates the needs of all members is really the blessing of a well-facilitated process. And that's core to these, the way that these emerging systems like dynamic governance and holocracy work. And this, particularly if you imagine how this could continue, how this continued to grow, this is integrated control. This is control over land use and project design and permitting that integrates both the public with government, or more generally speaking, integrates the micro-needs on individual properties with the macro-needs, the regional needs that government is here to look out for. And this would indeed, just to bring it full circle, this would result in a combination of local innovation and regional coordination, diversity and adaptability. It would be safe locally and globally as far as concerning the projects that come out of this type of process. And I believe it would restore trust between public and government and heal a broken relationship. So, the question that I'm here to ask your commission tonight is simply, should the city of Ojai implement the SLRI? And I understand, of course, that, in the context of my earlier slide with applying for a grant to implement it. And I understand, of course, that this is a decision ultimately for city council and I imagine that your commission has the ability to send a message to city council if you choose to do so. So now is the, now is the time for questions and answers, and I'm looking forward to your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. So I think what I'll do is I'll first open it up to see if any of the commissioners have any questions or comments. And I don't have any speakers cards, but if there's anyone, members of the public that want to come forward with a question or comment, we can do that. And then I did want to point out that if, in fact, we want to discuss this further and possibly make a recommendation, we have to put it on our agenda. So at the end of our discussion, we can, you know, collectively see if that's the direction we want to go in. So I'll open it up to my fellow commissioners. If you have any questions or comments now, anyone? Kathy?
Okay, I have a question. So, you're talking about a lot of things, but I just, could you talk a little bit in detail about what exactly are the issues with not being able to put a composting toilet into a house that someone's building? Could you talk about that? And what are the obstacles? Where do you, where do you come up against the problems? Because, I'll just, I don't really have any expertise in this area, but I thought, I thought there was some opportunity, maybe it's limited, maybe it's difficult, but I thought that there was opportunity to put in a compostable toilet.
Okay, good question.
So just talk about, I need some specific examples where you can talk about.
Sure. And I, I include my personal story, my personal origin story about with the composting toilet at the risk of you coming away thinking that this is about composting toilets. I hope that I haven't given you that impression. That's just a very, very specific example that happens to be how I, you know, how I got into this.
Just trying to get, I'm just, yeah, just to help me understand what.
Definitely.
What the problem.
So technically, technically, nothing that anyone wants to do is totally illegal. Technically, I could go to my county environmental health official and say, I want to do this. Will you issue a permit for it? And he would have the authority under the local agency management plan to do that. Technically, I could design some crazy building out of mud or feathers or whatever and go to my building official and say, I want to do this, and he or she would say, well, you know, do the engineering drawings and prove it'll work and meet the codes and, you know, sure. And, you know, similarly, I could get a, in zoning, I could get a zoning variance or anything in theory. I'm not, but I'm here because in practice, I mean, one advocate for sustainable design used the metaphor, it's a death by a thousand cuts. It's not just, it's not a brick wall that says, you cannot do this. It's just that the process that we have in place, everything from the, you know, the understandable risk of liability that the officials face in permitting something that they're not comfortable with, they're not familiar with, to the fact that, that there's an, there is no means for neighbors or locals of a project to, they don't have the capacity to work out differences in the project or any incentive to because they have no authority over the permitting process. So all these things together create, depending on your preferred metaphor, either a death by a thousand cuts or an extremely long, tall uphill slog to get anything but the, to get anything approved except for the projects which are most conformed to the norm.
So are you saying it's ultra-expensive to, if you wanted to put a?
You can.
I'm sorry to be so focused on something.
No, please.
Like composting toilets, because I do understand it's global, it's more, it's a much larger issue that you're talking about, but is it, is it a matter of expense in hiring the engineer and having the capital to follow through on an extended process?
It can just come down to money, yeah. It can just come down to money, because if you have enough legal support and enough engineering support and enough lobbying support, you know, eventually, unless the whole community is against you, you know, eventually you can get your project permitted.
Okay. And real quick, so are there, do we have people that have compostable toilets? Are they, I mean, are people putting them in now in Ventura County, anywhere?
Well, I'm more familiar with Santa Barbara and I do know of, and I do know of others. All the ones I know personally are not, are under the radar.
Oh, okay.
And that's just another point I want to share is that the innovation that's happening in these kinds of things, whether building material systems or onsite wastewater reuse or people living in garages and all, you know, figuring how to do ultra-dense affordable housing, it's all happening beneath the radar because that's the only way to do it affordably, feasibly. So, what this could mean, what the SLRI could mean, is a way to make it easy enough to do all these things above the radar with permits so that it's, has all the benefits of an integrated approach as opposed to individuals doing it illegally because that's the only way they can. And I'm speaking from personal experience, of course.
Well, I don't, I'm just going to hold, I have thoughts about, but it's more discussion.
Okay. I want to get your question.
Just a comment, which is that in my experience in doing things governmentally, it does come down to money and it does come down to if you can hire an expensive lawyer and no one really wants to take any kind of responsibility. And one part of this that I really like is the idea of having a public library of ways of approaching a problem that are available and therefore would be available more widely to people who don't have the means to do that and to figure out ways to monitor what happens if you put in something that's more unusual with advisors. And we had talked about the, putting together a team from SLO or kids who were doing this in school who could actually monitor the environmental effects of whatever it is that you've chosen to try and do so that there's more information publicly available as opposed to everything falling on somebody who has deep pockets or the rest of us who don't, who just have to kind of do whatever they can manage.
If I may, I'd like to add a comment to Commissioner Corbin's comment. One aspect of the SLRI that I didn't speak to because there are so many aspects to it is that, well, as I think, as you may have noticed, a couple of the endorsers of this were the chancellor's, UCSB's Chancellor's Committee on Sustainability and a group of San Luis Obispo Cal Poly faculty. There's a whole background story to those endorsements, which was that the kinds of things that we would like to do experimentally are hugely, are very much of interest to particularly graduate students in various fields, whether it's agriculture or wastewater systems or various kinds of industrial applications. And any one pilot project potentially permitted under the SLRI could be a thesis for a group of master's students. And this, this was the context of my discussions with the university, universities and the basis of the endorsements. So, and it's, and it's my favorite, my favorite meaning of the research in SLRI is that this is, this is, by research, I really do mean research in that academic sense. And there's really, for academics and students that are interested in these areas, they don't have access to legal systems to do their research with. So this would, this would open that up.
Several at this point. And a couple comments. You know, you've mentioned the word innovation. First of all, thank you for being here, Ben, appreciate it. And I want to acknowledge the years and years and commitment you've put into fleshing this out, because I know you've gotten a lot of input and bumped up against a lot of, you know, belief systems and intellects. And it's, it's good that it's being vetted in that way. So I, for one, you know, don't like to see innovation be relegated to being under the One of the reasons is it doesn't give others the opportunity to do a collective shift in what's allowable and rationally safe. So it's hard to bring in new ideas and shift a culture if everyone's hiding in their individual hovels and there's, and there's no collective agreement. And it's so interesting how we get insular when there's so many models and demonstrations in other regions and states and countries that have already implemented a lot of this. and countries that are, have already implemented a lot of this, especially with reinforced adobe or, or even just adobe and Cobb in, in Europe and the Near East and how the buildings have been there for so long, hundreds of years. And so, you know, it's important to know that not all, but some of our codes and building and safety regulations have come about through lobbying from different industries and how things are built. So in that sense, the personal is political and there's some shifts of consciousness to happen, happen I want to speak about the Sustainable Living Research Committee for a minute. Maybe you can go back to that slide, that one.
This one?
Yeah, thank you. So one question is, the committee, it overlaps with the government circle, but is anyone from the government on the SLRC or what the SLRC creates then gets submitted to staff?
So if there are members of staff or commissioners and potentially even council members that have a keen interest in this type of subject matter, to my knowledge, that would be quite appropriate for them to, to sit on the SLRC, but it's not necessary. I'm, I'm well aware that certainly in the case of staff, their, their time is very limited anyway.
Mm-hmm.
And so the function, at least with respect to staff, of the SLRC, SLRC would be to deliver very thoughtful, vetted, essentially pre-approved project plans, or pre-approved in the sense that the, the committee has determined that this meets those three, those three requirements.
Okay. And everyone on the SLRC is a volunteer. Obviously, the applicants are, but the expertise are there and recruited how? And the courage to remain through the whole process, how?
So as, as with most committees, to my knowledge, they are voluntary. There are some equivalents to this in other jurisdictions. For instance, Santa Barbara County has a, a committee which is called the IBRC, the Innovative Building Review Committee. And it's a set of voluntary committee members, several of whom are prominent architects and that kind of thing. And they sit on that committee just because of their passion about the subject matter. As, however, as this grows, if you can imagine these circles sort of growing, there will ultimately be some administrative need, functions that need to be handled with this in terms of documentation. And for instance, one, the public should be able to see this entire structure of the SLRC transparently on a website somewhere as it grows. So there will be, there may indeed be a need for a nonprofit to be created or for this to be housed within an existing nonprofit to provide some of the administrative functions that don't need to be administered by the city, although in theory, they could also be administered by the city as well. Then I suppose both would be possible.
And as you mentioned, grants are available and there's various.
Right.
Climate action, climate change action grants that are showing up. So if there's multiple applicants like you have in the SLRC circle, how are they all going to get serviced at the same time? And I'm trying to like, so there's three applicants with somewhat radically different, I mean, as it starts, right? Because that's kind of random what kind of projects will come forward.
I'm, I'm glad you're asking that. So what I actually intended, or I should say, one of my, the intended meanings of showing multiple applicants in a single circle is that the applicant has come and they've invited their neighbor, who is also a potential applicant.
Got it.
Okay. So this is, this is, this is critical if we're going to, for this to integrate the, the micro needs to the macro needs, that neighbor to neighbor tensions are resolved at the design phase of projects in a trans, in a transparent way.
So if there's a cluster home village that wants to be a demonstration project and there's going to be three residents, that might be three applicants within it. So it's not like you'd have a compost toilet and a, and a, I don't know, I'm blanking on, and a tiny home and a, and a this all in one circle with completely different needs. You don't see that, that's not what would be occurring.
No, the circle needs to process one.
Got it.
At a time.
Got it.
And I should illustrate also that per the need for accountability of performance impact, say for instance, the example of onsite, a, a limited onsite parking, the applicant for a project, let's, let's imagine a, a, a very dense downtown housing cooperative of some kind, could be a tiny house village, it could be an apartment complex, something like that. The, the applicant, because the impacts of a, of a, of a zero onsite parking project like that, because the impacts are so user dependent, the actual residents have to be part of this process in some way, or at least a representation of those residents. So there would have to be some kind of, so this does actually require, for this to be efficient, would require a certain amount of organization and cooperation among residents of, say, more dense co-housing projects where they are, have a shared, a, a shared need or a shared purpose that they self-govern and represent at this stage. That, that's how the loop can, could be closed with impacts such as traffic and parking.
So some of the conversations that occur in the chamber here would occur in the SLRC and potentially be resolved there between neighbors and experts and fleshing out a project that works for everybody.
Exactly.
And then brought into the chambers.
Yep.
For approval. And, and I see that being a means to calm some of the divisiveness that occurs sometimes that I've seen here where, where a project comes aboard and then, and opposites ends, ends of the spectrum come up for, for public comment and it's kind of, they're not really trying to resolve, they're just speaking their opinion. And then it's heard by counselor or by us or, you know, what, whatever commission. And, and then we take that into account, but those folks aren't really speaking with each other. There really isn't a community decision-making process, which is what.
And you can take that one step further. What I see in that, in that situation and what in the best of all possible worlds might happen in this scenario is really an education process, which is missing because when people come here and they're upset and they speak out, oftentimes they don't really understand the project. They don't understand the implications of the project. And, and then, or you get the other thing where people come in and talk about a project and, oh, I think we should pass it because he's a really nice guy. I mean, I, I, the number of times, they're, they're great people. Well, it doesn't have anything to do with the project. So I think that's another thing that could potentially work well is that, that it might give, be an educational process that would give people a better understanding of process and what the implications of things are.
So the, the innovation isn't only in land use and building and environmental safety. The innovation is also in relationally amongst, within our community.
Thank you for articulating that so nicely. Exactly.
And I just wanted to make a comment. For instance, it's not quite the same, but with one of our past, past community development directors, we had a subcommittee of the planning commission and our goal was when, it pretty much was for larger, like, commercial business projects. They, we would actually meet with our, the community development director and that applicant, a pre-planning commission meeting and help review the project, given them suggestions, help them with some issues that they were having. So in a way, that was, that's an example of having, you know, like a, a committee that would do something prior to like city council or prior to planning commission. So I, I can easily see how that would be done. But I also wanted to say how I think important and relevant this is, providing the fact that, and I, looking at our staff members, we don't want to overburden, we understand, you know, there's the financial issue, but if that could be resolved, just due to climate change, due to the disasters, meaning like the Thomas Fire, potential mudslides that we haven't had yet here in Ojai, but, you know, adjacent communities have had the drought. I mean, the lake is still under 50%. The chance of all this happening and reoccurring is well-known. We know how many projects come to us, whether it's residential or a commercial project, there's always invariably a parking issue. We know there's the, the need statewide for affordable housing and then of course, building materials, methods and materials to deal with climate disasters and what have you and to make everything affordable. We're constantly being, having to address those issues. I also wanted to point something out. I'm, I'm not sure if any of you were on the commission at the time, but we had a project, I want to say it was somewhere in the last five years, but it was a residential project here in Ojai. And it happened to be an ADU parcel, which is a larger parcel for the city. And there was an existing dwelling that the owners were going to live in temporarily, but it was going to be, at that time, their second dwelling unit was before the ADU new laws came out. And they were going to be building their, a new, larger home. In addition, that applicant had bought a sustainable modular unit they, they had bought through the Solar Decathlon. It's a annual gathering of architects or architectural students from across the country and they come up with innovative design and building methods and solutions. Anyway, he had bought this, this unit and he wanted to put that on the property. And I remember us like saying to our planning director or the community development director, is there anything, is there any way that they could do this? And they had a large lot. There was.
Would be too many structures.
Yeah, there was going to be too many structures. But at the same, and at the same time, he said, you know, they, he, he wanted to, of course, you know, this would all have to be worked out, but open it up for students, you know, people to come and learn and check out this modular unit. But there was nothing in the code. We couldn't do anything about it. We had to say, oh, we're sorry, but, you know, you can't do it. And then we even said, could it be a pilot project? Could he do it for a year or two? No. So I'm just throwing that out, that as an actual example, that's something that's come to us here at Planning Commission. But I think what the SLRI does, considering all the factors that we know we're having to deal with now, it potentially gives us a, an opportunity, a platform to be creative, to be innovative and potentially get something legally into the code. And that's why I'm, I'm so interested and grateful for your presentation. So is there anything else or should, or I can open it up to see if there's anyone has any questions or comments from the public? We're good. Is there anyone? I don't have any speaker cards, but does anyone want to have a question or comment? Ron, do you want to come up to the podium? Three minutes or less.
Okay.
State your name.
I'm Ron Whitehurst. I live just north of the city of Ventura, Ventura County and Incorporated area. And we help farmers get off of toxic pesticides by setting up biological control programs. And, and so we're, we're kind of blessed that there's no US government regulation on beneficial insects. And so we can grow them and, and sell them, you know, pretty easily. We just need to get some permits to move them across state lines. And, and we rehabbed our, a hundred-year-old structure on our property. And we were exploring the limits of what we could do as far as having it more green in context of the code. And so we kept banging up against the, these flaws that something made sense as far as, you know, recycling, as far as natural building materials or something that would be, make a more comfortable house. But, but we would have needed to do some extensive engineering studies or something like that so that it would have been really prohibited. If we did purchase a, a system for a permitted gray water system, so we, we had that, we put together that system and such. But there was a number of blocks where it'd be great if, you know, we had this process where we could take it to a, a committee and, and you know, we've got all kinds of committees, the tree committee, the arts committee, you know, that, that review things now. And so this would be something that would review innovative projects that would evaluate these, these earth-friendly building processes and earth, earth materials, like building with, with earth and vet them so that there could be, the, the committee would be sure that the buildings were safe, that they were healthy and that they fit in with the community and, and didn't bother the neighbors, that, you know, in a community, we need to, to work with our neighbors and such. And so I'm, I'm really excited about the process, pro, excuse me, for the prospects of this process and think that it can open up things dramatically, what with the dramatic need, you know, for more houses to replace the ones that, that burned down on the north side of Ventura here. And for the need for comfortable, safe, secure housing for all of these people that, that are currently homeless, then this opens up a number of options. So, you know, in a sense, you know, building with earth materials, it's, it's dirt cheap. And so it opens up a, a number of options, you know, so that we have buildings that, that, that do not burn, that, that actually would be a fire refuge in case of wildfire coming through and that would not present problems as far as, you know, cradle to grave, you know, toxics as far as, you know, there's no problems with toxicity of soil. And then when you're done with it, you take the roof off and it melts back into the, into the earth. So appreciate the opportunity to speak with you.
Anybody else? Nick?
My name is Nicholas O'Way. I'm a local architect. I live just outside of the city. Want to thank you, Kathy, and the fellow commissioners for bringing Ben here. I was attracted to the word sustainable. My particular concern in, in the town of Ojai is the future of the central part of the town and multi-use research in how the town can graduate from being in this straitjacket that we all understand is the 20th, 20th century transportation issues where we're all going to jump in a car to get home. One way of doing it. And I think that this format could be very exciting as a kind of start in a, in researching different ways of moving and living in downtown Ojai. And I look forward to that. That's, I think it'd be a good thing. Thank you.
Anyone else? Oh, go ahead, Michalina.
Hi, my name's Michalina Johnson. I'm a local writer and graduated from Nordoff several years ago. I just have a couple of things I wanted to say based on research I've done on affordable housing. I've found that the price-to-income ratio of Ojai for, so basically like a house here costs about eight to nine times as much as median household income. And that ranks near the San Jose metro area and Santa Cruz, which is pretty alarming. Those are considered the most expensive places to buy a home within all of the United States. most expensive places to buy a home within all of the United States. I have several friends here who are single parents and, you know, really struggle financially. I've been reading the housing element, and what's come out to me is that that document is designed to serve the most, designed to come up with housing units for the most vulnerable in our community, that includes female-headed households, the elderly, and people like me who have started to age out of living in their parents' households, you know, 18. And I've encountered a lot of people around my age who are living with their families, and I'm just kind of putting it out there as a question, like what is the solution for all these people from single parents to the elderly, to disabled, to farm workers, to even young people who are really struggling financially? And the solutions, I think, are comprehensive, they not only come with more affordable housing, but I think it's attached to this question of like, when we start thinking about parking for a unit, a lot of people have to drive out of town to have a job that enables them to afford to live in the city of Ojai. So as we begin to think about solutions even for affordable housing units, how are we also making sure that there are jobs available to where public transportation is an answer, to where people can actually use a bike to get to work? And that job that they're commuting to is paying them a livable wage, and really rethinking about what a livable wage is, especially in the context of our town. So, and I think that ties in, like, a lot of the questions that we're talking about right now with the SLRI and rewriting the housing element coming up, I just think that, like, those solutions are gonna have to be tied to a lot of other conversations in the valley. Thank you.
Anyone else? Vina?
Hello, my name is Vina Lustado, I'm a resident just outside of Ojai, the city of Ojai. I really appreciate the Planning Commission to allow this presentation by Ben Warner. I think it's a very commendable effort, and I see a lot of issues being able to be addressed at a critical point in the city of Ojai, as well as even the county of Ventura and beyond. I think the process that he's proposing is really going to help minimize a lot of the expense that's associated with not just housing, and actually, a lot of it is the permit process. Because even if you were to propose a very affordable house that's small and economically sound, a lot of the barriers is the process for permitting, from planning to building to public works and all the other departments involved. And so if we were to have a more efficient system that we can conduct research with, allowing maybe innovative land use management, it's so restrictive right now with the general plan zoning guidelines, you can't, it's, it's very restrictive, it's very hard to do anything different. And the idea of having an open-source system where people can go to the city and look at various floor plans, they're already engineered, that is already, you know, passed Title 24, and maybe a couple of different floor plans for ADUs, that would really streamline the process and reduce fees dramatically, and lessen the burden of time with the planning, well, the building and the planning review process. So I obviously am very positive towards this initiative, and I hope that the Planning Commission can move it forward for City Council review.
Thank you, anyone else? All right, so I'll, I'll take it back to my fellow commissioners, so we have the option, you know, if we are in agreement to agendize this for a future meeting.
Can I make some more comments?
Of course, yes.
Couple of things that are exciting to me, the idea of a architectural library that's pre-populated, not only from new, new designs that may come from local applicants, but that have been researched from other regions, that we can then adopt and add to the library. So that could be populated fairly quickly with some forethought and research into what's happening in other areas. I think, again, it seems like cities and towns often are reinventing the wheel when something has already been successful elsewhere. And so there's some adoption to take place there. I had the opportunity yesterday to go to the Ventura Museum, and they had a form for artists to discover what, I'm gonna say our, because I was one of them that lost their home, what our needs were right after the fire currently and ongoingly. And they used the World Cafe method to do that. So there were tables, and we migrated 15 minutes at each table and had these discussions. And one of the things that dawned on me that I shared there, where I think the SLRI and the committee could help with, is having flexibility and innovation for when emergencies occur. I was offered an RV twice, I was also turned down by three different landowners who said they were scared of getting busted by the county because they weren't allowed to have that there. So there was a situation of displaced people, not just artists, but in general, that weren't allowed to pitch a tent on, on someone's property, or park an RV, or whatever it might be, because the same zoning ordinances were in place, there was no flexibility of, of stepping out of that zone, where that could alleviate, alleviated a lot of pain and stress. And those are the type of issues I could see that their pre-permitted zoning flexibility in, in specific cases like that. I wanted to ask Ben a question, if he's willing to come back up. So I want to move forward as if, like in the, jumping into the law assumption. Let's say we choose to agendize it, it goes to council, it moves forward, a grant is received, a consultancy is created. How does one actually jumpstart, like what would the first, what would be the steps of the very first SLRC occurring? Like what would that in real time actually look like? We're there now.
There, there are two things that, that I would initiate in parallel. The first would be to engage with city staff in vetting the various, the three code flexibility mechanisms. And I would take on the task of bringing the proposal to staff, so that work would be done by myself and, and other fellow consultants. And the objective of that track would be to move those ordinances through with staff input to, to adoption by the City Council. So that's one thing. In parallel, presuming that through this outreach and the word getting out about this, that there are a handful of potential pilot projects identified, people come forward saying, I'd like to do this, I have an idea, then myself and fellow facilitators would begin the facilitation process, and we can begin that before the SLRC is formally adopt, recognized as a commission, and, and begin the process of, of, of design.
As a committee.
As a committee, excuse me, yeah, committee. Yeah, so those two things. So, so ideally, they meet together in a timely fashion such that the, the legal aspect is adopted by the city, by the, and, and the committee is, is, is recognized by the time that the handful of pilot project proposals are, are ready to be submitted by the SLRC to, to staff.
And the, the SLR, SLRC experts are populated via what mechanism? You just put the word out, who wants to be involved?
Yeah, I don't, I, I, I know for, I know for a fact that there are a number of, our best experts would love to engage in this, and they've been looking forward to the opportunity to do something like this. It's a word of mouth, it's a, it's a pretty, certainly within renewable building materials is a pretty small community of people. When I go to the, you know, thinking positively about the prospect, when I go to, to the university to share that this is happening in Ojai, the word will spread there as well, as far as expertise in other areas of, and other domains.
And, and thank you, Ben. So one of the, one of the other things that excites me is this idea of demonstrations and pilot projects, and then getting college students involved to, you know, the, the Sustainable Living Research Initiative, is that data's collected. So a pilot project may be innovative, you know, day one, but in a couple of years, it could be maybe not the norm, but more commonplace. And data is collected, how it functions, how it functions environmentally, how it functions safety, how it functions socially, and that that data's then created. So then the people within government, the leaders within government can feel at ease that, okay, we, we, we may not have been expert, we, we may not be experts, but what the experts recommended have been vetted and, and proven viable. And that's an exciting aspect.
I think another exciting thing is, and I meant to mention this earlier, is also the timing, because our, the city of Ojai general plan update is going to be happening in the near future. And I know we've briefly talked about it at Planning Commission, of course, you know, this would have to be directed from City Council, but, you know, we've mentioned or talked about, you know, climate change kind of being the overarching direction for the entire general plan potentially. And even it was a little bit different, I, I don't think we can brush that under the carpet. But the SLRI, even just because of that, could fit perfectly into some of the updates for the general plan, which would have to be in compliance with, so the timing is, the timing is good also. Any other questions?
Well, I don't have any questions, I, I just, what you're talking about, it's, it's very complex, and I think the difficulty is, is narrowing your focus on something that's doable, and, and being careful not to, you know, talk about everything right now at the beginning. And my thought was also, the general plan is a great, great, that what, what we're talking about, sustainability, in the real sense, not, not just the, the, the word that everybody uses for, to sound good. The general plan is the perfect place, we have to start there. The challenge of doing some zoning regulations, dealing with the multiple layers of government, I mean, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty mind-boggling. And I, I say that because I've worked in government pretty much all my life, so, hard, it's hard. And my thought is, and again, this would be more appropriate to, we can discuss, is if we decide to agendize it, that I, I would visualize maybe a working group, a working committee, small, but to, to help really focus this, to help deal with the multiple layers. I mean, you're talking about not only the local government, but county, regional, and, and state. And, you know, I'm not sure how much can be done just at the local level without addressing the other, the other layers. And I just think that having, having a few different perspectives and minds working on this collaboratively is prob, might be a very good way to go. And obtaining a grant and being able to be financed in terms of working on developing codes and so forth, it sounds, sounds really good. But I just, I think that it's going to be very important to focus on something that's really doable, with one working committee maybe, and interacting with government, and, and I think that, and of course, the council would be the people to really establish a working committee and providing, providing guidance, if not appointments, on, in terms of who would be on that committee. So anyway, so those are my thoughts, I'd be very happy to get this agendized, and I, I support that, so. In fact, I'd make, I'd make a motion for that, and...
All right, so, go ahead. I was looking to see if there, if there was any other, you know, last minute comments.
I second that, I second the motion.
I'll turn it over to Ray, maybe he can articulate in more detail.
Oh, a motion?
Yeah. I guess at this point, it's just to agendize.
Yeah, yeah, the motion is to agendize a discussion on the Sustainable Living Research Initiative.
Right, and we'll also have our chair...
And come up with some recommended action.
Yeah, Commissioner Quillissey wanted to be here tonight, but he was ill, and so I think, you know, that'd be, be good to have him in further discussion. So, we, we don't have to do a formal vote, do we, Sherry? Yeah, okay, so aye.
Aye. Can we request what date that happens, or is that random?
Suzanne, I see you smiling over there.
Currently, I would suggest that you leave it open, because if items fall off the next agenda, maybe it could come back at a sooner date. I also would need to discuss the placement on a future agenda with the city manager and the management consultant.
Okay, that would make sense.
Can I, can I, I don't know if this is an appropriate question to ask, but as a city staff person, what's your take on this? Am I allowed to ask that?
I, I currently don't have an opinion, I was a member of the city staff in Santa Barbara at the time that the enforcement case was being pursued.
Got it, I wondered about that, yes.
The Creeks Division is the body in the city of Santa Barbara that regulates the stormwater quality, it also receives measure, I think it's K money, for clean, clean water projects. So they were the ones that created the Stormwater Management Policy Manual, as well as pursued the MPDEES permit, the National Pollution Discharge and Elimination Permit. So that's why Creeks Division was the one that was in the lawsuit about the sewers leaking into the water tables, so.
That's true.
Just sidebar there.
Thank you for that. I was hoping for more, that wasn't so specific about that, but I just want to reflect on what Commissioner Lottis just, just was speaking about, about the complexity. Co-chair Nolan and myself have been fairly immersed in conversations about the SLRI. And so it's really interesting, at first, it seemed really complex, and I couldn't put my mind around it. And now when I'm hearing you say it's complex, it's interesting, because I'm going, really? It seems, it seems...
The different layers of government, I mean, you have the Regional Water Quality Control Board, I mean, you gotta deal with them, I mean, you gotta deal with the County Health Department, or, or building some of the...
Yes.
I, it's, it's, and to sit down and write some, some kind of, I mean, zoning regulations that would even allow a pilot project, you know, I, I think that's where you may, may want to start, you know, some kind of a pilot project, and, and you would have to, you know, be able to visualize it enough to the point where you can write grants and obtain money for that, and find a location, and it's just...
I guess I...
It's huge, it's a huge, huge effort, that's all I can say.
I, I, I'm, I completely agree with you that it's a big effort. I guess the way I'm, I, I'm framing it is, yeah, we can say it's... I guess the way I'm, I, I'm framing it is, yeah, we can say it's, like, in hearing you speak, the things we have to deal with, even that kind of language, to me, like, when I hear innovation, and I hear a, a model that's relation, based on relational, that's, that requires a shift in languaging, that, that is no longer using an us and them language, or there's people, or, or things to deal, you know, departments to, to deal with. It's more, you know, the languaging has to look at the commonalities and what the end goals are, and, and create, create the relations and the languaging instead of dealing with, we're collaborating with. And, and I'm totally hearing you, because the current, since the current system and the current models and paradigms, but when I hear Ben say.
Problem is, I'm looking for a way to, to find the, the yes answer, not the no, and not the wall. And if you want to do something to open the door in the wall, you have to deal with the existing system.
Oh, no.
So that's all.
Absolutely. I'm not, I'm not suggesting a circumvention of, of what exists, but when I, what, the possibility I'm, I'm seeing and hearing, and when I hear Ben speak, is, is that the environmental and the, and the building and safety officials could, could allow certain things, but because they don't know about it, it's just a no. They go with what they're familiar with. If, if that, if the stress level of taking, of needing to educate oneself, you know, I, 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 I kind of compare it to an allopathic doctor who doesn't know that much about nutrition, because they're so pressed up seeing patients all the time, and in medical school, they don't get that many hours of it. They just don't know, and they don't have the time to know. And what I, what I'm seeing is the possibility that, that brings all parties together in a, in a, in a peaceful way, if you will, and, and a, and a thought provoking way, is, is that they don't have to know. The expertise on the SLRC brings that knowledge forward, that then makes those people comfortable to allow some kind of innovative design or land use that they normally would say no to, simply out of ease.
I'm, I'm talking about enabling, enabling zoning and, and enabling, enabling language to allow this, even, even just coming up with that. That's got to be in place.
Yes.
I mean, the general plan, talking about this, setting the stage for it, okay, then you do, then you need enabling language in your zoning, in your, in your city code somewhere. And.
If I may, I'd like to acknowledge and address some technical details of your comment, Commissioner Lottis.
And I do think we're. Be on the agendized item, but.
It's just quick response, because your point, Commissioner, that with respect to the city, county, and state levels, is, is a, is a valid point. With respect to zoning, that's entirely within the providence of the city. City has its own zoning ordinance. When we were working with the City of Santa Barbara, we did, under, under a locally supported grant, we did develop and vet through planning staff some draft Solarized Zoning Program Language that, that they, that they, that they approved of hypothetically. So we do have a head start in thinking critically about that layer. With respect to environmental health, that does require the county, as you say. And so if the first phase of this is just within the City of Ojai, we'll have to put that to the side and wait until hopefully the county sees what Ojai has done and wants to do the same, in which case we'll, we'll be able to fold in the, the environmental health layer. With respect to building codes, you're correct that they do reside with the state. However, exercising alternative methods and materials doesn't require any development at state level. It's already a pathway they grant. It's just giving the building official the, the support structure to, to exercise that authority. No, thank you for allowing me to clarify that.
All right, so we, well, you're going to work on. Suzanne's going to come back to us with potentially a, a date to get it on the agenda. So, great, all right, thank you. So we're going to move on to our informational items. Four is the director decisions. Do we have any comments or questions, other than there are a lot of hazardous oak trees being removed?
Yes.
Yeah. Any questions, comments? Suzanne, did you want to share anything? Or is it pretty, other than we're looking at it, we've got, yeah, all the information. Okay, so are we good on, on that? And we can go on to item five. And that's our Planning Commission tentative agenda. Suzanne?
Currently, for the meeting of August 7th, we tentatively have scheduled the cables concept review. That may or may not come forward. I still am meeting with the city manager.
Okay.
And the project applicant, to make sure that we have adequate documentation for that concept review. Adaptive review use is also on there as a discussion item, and a design review permit for the Ojai Valley Inn and Spa Central Service Building. It's a new building, consolidating uses.
Mm-hmm.
Don't know yet. The August 21st meeting, we have a, a discussion item to identify topics for September 10th special joint meeting with council.
Okay.
What Sherry is alluding to, we had a director's hearing this past, I guess it was July 2nd, on a project that's on Ojai Avenue, 960 East Ojai Avenue, for some bollard installation along the shared property line and along the public alley to secure the private property. That has been appealed, so it will be coming before the Planning Commission, once I can communicate with both parties and figure out a date that will work for both parties.
Okay.
You may see on the future Planning Commission hearing, that 1202 East Ojai Avenue, the bowling alley site, the previous project that had the brew pub, pool, and hotel, that has since expired. So if anything comes forward on that site, it will be a brand new application.
Okay.
We do have a couple of other items that are pending completeness. They're not ready to schedule at this time. You can see our long list of pending items here.
Yes.
If there's anything that you would like to discuss or ask questions about that are on that pending items for City Council, or.
Yeah.
Recommended City Council items to PC for review. I'd be happy to.
Any questions, comments?
We're going to talk about the joint meeting later, right? That's another.
That's our next.
It'll be on the August 21st meeting for discussion.
Yeah, we'll do that. I know we, we kind of discussed that. Well, we've actually had, two of our meetings have been postponed, our two joint meetings, and I know we, we talked about a couple of things, but we'll probably start over. But, yeah, it'll all be new. All right, and then, what else am I missing here? My page here. Oh, now we're down to the Planning Commission reports, and I happen to be the first one for City Council on June 25th. And I always take these notes, and then when I get in here, I go, oh, can I read my own writing, unfortunately? But let me, let me just quickly go through that. Starting with public comment, or public communications, there was quite a few members of the public that showed up for climate resilience and for the city to declare a climate emergency, and I believe that may be going on to the City Council agenda, but we'll, we'll find out about that. And then on the public hearing items, the first one was the budget review. And I happened to walk in, for the last couple of minutes, they were doing, working on the budget when I came in from 6:00 to 7:00, and then it came back up on the agenda. And basically, this was in regards to outside organizations asking for city funding, and apparently, Councilmember Haney can correct me when he comes up here, but I believe they had $110,000 that they were short, based on the asks, and, which would have given them a deficit of $52,000. And I think ultimately, it was decided that they would, the council would come back in six months in October and review the budget again, and see if there were any additional funds. Zero. Okay, and there's my answer.
No, no, you're right.
Oh, that was right. Okay, you're, I was right on. Okay, good. There also was a zoning text amendment to amend the solar access standards, and that motion passed. A discussion item was North Drown Avenue traffic calming, and a lot of the neighborhood residents showed up, and they asked to put speed humps on the street to slow down traffic. And if I've got this right, I believe the residents were willing to fund that project. And that was going to move forward as kind of a pilot project, so they were going to test it out and see, the city, and see how it works. And whether or not it'll stay for the long term will be to, will be determined. And then, let's see, the downtown parking study, there's a request for proposals, and I think during that discussion, they also talked about considering EV charging at some additional places in town. So one of them was Cliff Vista Park, and the other one was at the Edison Substation on Montgomery and Willow. And then also, there was a request to discuss and consider adopting a resolution opposing new oil and gas drilling and hydraulic fracturing lease sales within the Ojai Valley. And I think at the time, it was, it's just a discussion item, they didn't have, the council didn't have all the information, but there was a motion to move forward, I believe, and to write a letter that would go to the county. Let me see if I can, let me see what I got here. Anyway, it would, I think to the state, the county, and BLM. And basically, it was a shorter meeting that night, so I think that kind of wrapped up what I had. Commissioner Powers, did you attend the July 9th meeting?
I did not.
Okay.
And.
Oh, was it canceled?
No, July 9th.
But he had two meetings to go to.
I had two to go to. Yeah, and I, I did not go to the City Council meeting.
Okay, and then MAC?
MAC didn't happen.
Oh, and that's the one that was canceled, okay.
That was, yeah, so, and I didn't have a chance to watch the City Council.
Okay.
Council meeting either, but I will, you know, I kind of went from making too long of reports, remember, I used to like get heckled for going on and on and on, to, to.
To not going at all.
To, to, oops.
So you get this, or you get that?
It wasn't intentional, it was just life ticked over.
Yeah, that happens.
But a reminder that, you know, the, the Ojai City YouTube.
Right.
Channel has every, everything on it.
Right.
And that's primarily where I go to, to review as well, and take notes from. And it is, it's not City of Ojai, it's Ojai City is the YouTube channel.
YouTube channel, okay, good. And then our complete.
And I apologize for that.
Sorry, go ahead. And there was no report from Complete Streets. We actually canceled it, because Planning Commission was canceled that day, it was the day before the 4th of July. And now our City Council liaison, Councilmember Randy Haney. You're on, on deck.
You don't have any comments?
Nothing? All right. Oh, let me ask, do the, do my fellow commissioners have any questions for Councilmember Haney?
Well.
Come on up, Randy.
I have a question.
We have a question for you.
Maybe another inappropriate question. So as member of the City Planning Commission, we have now lost another Community Development Director, and I would like to know if there's any possibility that the Planning Commission could get a little more information, other than our Community Development Director resigned. They just disappear, and I would really love to know why, or at least some inclination.
I think, here's, here's the easiest answer. Obviously, it's a personnel decision and a personnel matter, and they're private. If you want to know, I, maybe you need to contact Luke and have a personal discussion with him.
Okay.
But you're not going to get anything more from us, other than he resigned. And it'd be the same question that you asked Susan here tonight, or Suzanne, is, what's your opinion? To me, that's the wrong question to be asked.
No, I don't, didn't mean to ask Susan what her opinion was.
But just let me finish. The, it puts them in a difficult position. Their position here is to help you interpret code and to give you advice on code.
I understand.
And to be as neutral as possible. So asking them an opinion on this gentleman's program, it's okay to ask, I'm just saying it's, it's not, you're putting staff in a very difficult position.
Okay, I understand.
So I would just suggest that we don't do that, but.
It was not my intention to ask her what her opinion was. My intention was to ask, as a person who does that job, what she sees as maybe the difficulties of that particular kind of scenario.
Now, I think that's a very appropriate question. I think that's a very appropriate question, but that's not how you phrased it.
Then that was my mistake.
Right. But, that's what I'm saying, if you ask that question.
Yeah, no.
You see yourself relating to this.
It's just because she does that job every single day, and so when she sees something like that, she's going to look at it from a very different point of view than I.
Well, she's going to look at it from, from what Catherine was saying.
Exactly.
And, and it's interesting how, watch, when you guys were on the outside looking in, and then you got on the Planning Commission, you started realizing how difficult this position is.
Yes.
And all of the relative information that you need to gather to actually make a decision. And as someone said, not listen to the 25 people that show up, but actually look at what is the ordinance, what's on the books, what do I have to abide by? That's the, that's the challenge that we all have. I have the same thing. And I have the same thing as a councilperson. When an appeal comes, I don't have the answer, I have to seek the answer. So I go to the code book, or I go to staff, or I go to our city attorney. We're all, we're all looking for that right definition and that right way to resolve an issue. And then, Ray, I loved your idea about, about communications and educating and all of that, because I think that's a part of everything that we do.
Right.
But there's another part that you've got to start with. And that's what Catherine was talking to. My suggestion, and I'll say it tonight, and I'll say it in two weeks, we did an MOU with Carnegie Mellon, where we allowed them to use the city as their guinea pig. We did an MOU with.
Nick Oatley.
Vina, and we allowed the city to participate in her grant writing. And my suggestion is down the road, I would, I don't know Ben's status, I don't know if he's a nonprofit, I know nothing about him, and I didn't have, I didn't hear anyone ask any of those questions tonight about who he is, and what he is, and what he can do other than come up here and speak about his idea of solving a lot of difficult problems. He might want to come back to us and say, can we use, can we use the city? Can we get an MOU with you? And can we go seek funding so that we can put together these studies?
There you go.
That will help us to develop this program. Because if you, I truly believe, if you just come to council with what I saw tonight, there's no answer there, there's no, there's no real ask there. It's a feel-good, yes. It's a feel-good, yes, I know we need it, but it's not relative to what you're asking, what you would be asking us to do. So, I think that's where you need to start, is you needed more information from Ben, because I think he's a smart man, and he's obviously been through a lot of trial and tribulations with the county. I might even ask what his status is with the county. That's a legitimate question to ask staff. Can you ask the county of Santa Barbara, what is his standing? You know, what have you agreed to do with this gentleman, what have you not agreed? Again, someone that's breaking the law, and wants to stand up here and boast about it, isn't necessarily a good thing to do. You alluded to that. If it's underground, the people above ground can't see it. And if you want to win me over, if you want to convince me that it's right, I need to have access to it. I need to understand it, I want to touch it, feel it, see it, smell it. And when it's underground, that means I've got to go to more work to get to it. So, again, I think these are the questions that you need to ask Ben, even if you have to bring him back. But I think that there's more information you need to gather before you even come to us, and with an ask. I just don't think you're ready. And I would tell you that in two weeks, when you agendize it. And I think that's another part of your discussion in two weeks, are the things that we're talking about right now. Because I think he's on to something. I just don't, I, it's funny, I'm sitting back there, and I'm going, God, this may not be in my lifetime, because there's a lot to it. But what he's saying makes sense. So, it's that, how do you act on that? And that's your role as commissioners, bringing it forward.
Right, and I appreciate, go ahead.
Then I want to rephrase my question about our community development directors to you then, which is that, I guess I don't know if it's a personal life decision, if it's a, if it's some problem in our city government that our professionals are running up against. I guess that's my concern, and I don't know the answer to that.
And as much information that I have, I still can't tell you. There's a multitude of reasons why someone comes and someone goes.
But from my point of view, it just seems a little troubling, so, and I don't know the answer, so. It might be nothing, you know, but it, I want to make sure that there's not something in our, in the running of our city that people are running into, that they feel like they're beating their head against the wall, or they're not getting assistance, or that's causing us to lose staff. So, that's why I asked the question. It's not, oh, what happened? It's, is there something that we can do to help our staff do their job better? If it's a personal life decision, there's nothing we can do about that. But if it's a professional thing that's problematic in the way our city's running, then that's something that I think we all need to know.
I think, truthfully, that all the city managers that I've worked with in the last three years, all have demonstrated that they want their staff to succeed. And I've never seen any of them be an impediment to any of them being successful. So, if they're not successful, that individual needs to look at themselves. Because I don't think it's the city manager, and I don't think it's the co-directors. I think that that's what it comes down to, is individuals. But I haven't seen it at any level where there's any deterrent or any action taken by the city manager that we deal with and the city attorney that would prevent or prohibit or not allow any employee in the city to rise to the occasion, or to be the best possible employee that they can be. So, I haven't seen that, so. If that helps answer a little bit of your question. Okay, and I'll be here for the next three months. I was very excited to come to the first canceled meeting. And I'm hoping we don't have any more of those. But I did understand it was July 3rd. And I'm sorry that Steve couldn't be here tonight, he would have added a lot to the conversation.
And he wanted to be, and so, yeah.
So, it doesn't hurt you bringing Ben back, but you have a specific list of questions. And again, you guys can form an ad hoc committee and actually deal with Ben on a different level, and then come back.
Right.
I don't think there's any fast track to this.
No, I don't think so either.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, anything else? All right, meeting adjourned.